Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the City Council Study Session to Order. The clerk will call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present except for Councilmember Rozansky, who has an excused absence.
First item is clarification for items on the consent calendar. Mr. Selich?
I have none.
Mr. Hent.
You're too quick, Mr. Mayor. I do have a request for clarification on item number 14, the landscaping savings, which I want to make clear, I'm in favor of that initiative. But I do note in there that we've stopped replacing trees or replanting trees that have had to be taken out. And I guess I'd like to get a better understanding of when we think we might begin to replant trees. And in the meantime, are we maintaining some sort of a prioritized list for trees that were taken out and not replaced? Seems like there ought to be some prioritization of these trees.
Mike, you might want to repeat it because Mark Carmen just walked in.
Oh, hi, Mark. Guess I was too quick. Timing's everything.
Would you like me to repeat my question?
Yeah, I just got the last couple of words.
Okay. So on the landscaping--
Breathless now.
Well, you frequently leave me breathless, Mark.
Is that your question?
No, 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 no. And I don't think it would make any sense to go into more detail on that statement. But in any event, regarding the landscape savings, item number 14, I note in there that we've stopped replacing trees.
Correct.
We've taken trees out. So two questions drive out of that for me. I'm certainly in favor of capturing the savings. But when will we be--when do you think we might start replanting trees that have been taken out? And second, in the meantime, are we maintaining some sort of a prioritized list whereby, you know, a tree that should have been replanted two years ago but wasn't because of a budget item, that tree's going to get preference over some other tree that came along later, that sort of thing?
Right, absolutely. The first question, we hope to start planting trees again next fiscal year. This was a one-year, if you will, one-year plan to save funds and to see how that goes. But and the list we are keeping on those trees, we are putting them in priority order. So, you know, the trees that have been deferred the longest will be the first to be planted, and we'll go with that kind of a plan. There is a priority system as far as this year. Trees that are destroyed because of vehicle accidents, we are replacing those trees now because we charge the insurance companies for that for that loss. Trees, reforestation where residents pay for the removal and replacement of trees, obviously those are being planted right away. So it hasn't completely stopped. It's just the trees that due to age or disease were deferring those for just this fiscal year.
Thank you.
I'd like to tie in because I was concerned about that.
Web?
Also, approximately, how much do you hope to save by laying these trees? Because I can't imagine that there's a really large number of trees that would fall on the scale. I mean, 100 of them would be what, 100 times 300, you know, that much money.
Right. Well, we do budget about $70,000 a year for tree replacement. So that, yeah, it's not a huge number, but it's part of our overall landscape plan to reduce the costs. Again, council certainly could add that back in as part of this year's budget. But it's just part of our--you know, we looked at a lot of different things that we tried to minimize impacts to the residents and to our visitors. And, you know, we looked at certain landscape things in high-profile areas. We knew we had to keep up with that. Some of the other things like tree replacement, we thought we could defer that for a year, save some funds and catch up in the following fiscal year. So that's--these decisions weren't made real lightly. We kind of looked at a lot of different things before we made that call.
Just speaking of trees, because I'll forget to send you an email, there are two trees that are dead and/or dying on Seaview between Carnation and Dallian, 2500 block. One's absolutely dead, and the other is a pine that's just very, very brown.
We'll get those next July. No, I'm just kidding. We'll take a look at those. Thanks.
Anything else, Mike? Councilmember Daigle?
None.
Councilmember Gardner?
Mark, another question. On number 10, the modifications we're making, are these that we didn't get it right the first time? Or are these modifications to the clean natural gas dispensing station because we've just seen changes we need to make because of usage?
I'm going to turn that out. It was actually a public work.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, councilmember, yes, this project is actually the project to modify the shop so we can actually work on the CNG vehicles that we are--
Okay.
So they need to modify the shop to kind of deal with that fuel and safety issues.
And then on number 11, we're going to eventually phase out--HOG is eventually going to phase out using the methane. Are we beginning to develop a plan so we don't end up with methane that we have nothing, can't utilize? I mean, it's certainly a valuable product if we use it correctly.
Yeah, it's a byproduct of the gas production or the crude oil that we produce. And HOG currently just takes that at no cost so we can stay in operation. But yes, there's a long-term plan to find an alternate use for that fuel, such as a generator or a co-genus.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
I have none.
And I have none. The next item on the agenda is zoning code update. Mr. Kiff?
So, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, we've dedicated the whole period of the study session today to something that a number of you and certainly a number of residents and staff has been working on a long time, and that's the update to the zoning code. Jim Campbell, Acting Planning Director, is here, as well as Greg Ramirez and Dan Campagnolo from the Planning Department. They've all spent probably more time than they'd ever have cared to spend on this item. So with that, I'll introduce Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff. As council is aware, we've been working on the zoning code update for quite some time. It's a direct result of the update of the general plan in 2006. As you know, the zoning code is our primary tool to implement the general plan. The project is a comprehensive update of the zoning code. It provides updated definitions, new zones, and a variety of other features. But today, we're going to really be focusing on residential development standards because as we went through the process, the public participation process, there was difference of opinion as to how we should regulate residential development. Over the last three years, we've been guided by the General Plan LCP Implementation Committee. Three council members are on that committee and three planning commissioners. We had 35 meetings. We went over three drafts of the code. And I really need to commend that effort because we went through hundreds and hundreds of changes to the codes to update them. Again, tonight, we'll be focusing on residential. We went then to the Planning Commission, and we had a study session and several public hearings. We had several other outreach meetings, one principally in Coronado del Mar and one here on the Peninsula. So we were getting feedback as we went after we did the draft with the committee. And that'll be an important distinction as we go forward. Some of the development principles that we wanted to address were really, we didn't want to do any harm to anyone. We didn't want to take away floor area. People feel entitled to that square footage. It's our legacy. So we didn't want to create non-conforming uses or non-conforming structures. We were trying to minimize that as best we could. We wanted to avoid unintended consequences as well. Second guiding principle was really, we had to be consistent with the general plan. We wanted to--and I'm going to really be focusing in on the residential development regulations in this case here. General Plan has policies that talk about architectural design, building modulation. And so these principles here that are on the slide are really what we were looking toward doing, providing articulation, high level of design, architectural treatment, compatibility, and look at adequacy of parking. Our third principle that we really were carrying forward is throughout the entire process is really how to simplify the standards. As you may know, or if you've tried to get a building permit in town and come through the zoning process, depending upon your circumstances, it is a complex document to navigate often. And we wanted to simplify it where we could, just to make it simpler for the public. What I'm going to be doing here is going through a variety of slides where--actually, I have three slides. One really focusing on several aspects of residential development regulations that the committee drafted. And then we're going to be going into the Planning Commission on how they handled those and why they may have changed those. And then I'm going to be going into some possible resolutions or solutions that we might come forward. And in that last slide, we're going to be focusing in on, you know, getting the council's input and feedback so we can go and modify the draft in accordance with their wishes. First things first, we wanted to revise height and grade standards. Now, when I say that, revising the height standard, we're not increasing the height limits at all, but how we actually measure the height. We have a secondary height limit measured at the midpoint of sloping roofs, and that's actually a little bit problematic in the field as well as in plan check. And it does affect designs. And we also wanted to look at grade standards. Now, we felt that it didn't do any harm. We were just changing the methodologies on how we measure height and how we determine grade. And how we determine grade is really under every little--under the midpoint and under the ridge of every roof. Sometimes you'll have a roof that complies on one side and doesn't on the other. It's an unusual concept to be measuring in so many ways. So again, we're simplifying that standard. Is it consistent with the general plan? Yes. Is it simplified? Yes. So these are the committee recommendations. We're going to see this again as we go through the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission did also endorse this. Open volume and building modulation with no floor area limit, that's what FAL stands for. In looking to simplify the code, we're looking for a way or a different method of calculating the size of buildings. Today, we have a floor area limit. Coronado del Mar, that's one and a half times the buildable area. And on the Peninsula and other areas, it's 2.0 times the buildable area. And just a refresh, the buildable area is the area parcel absent the setback standards. Now, in the committee's draft, what we were looking to do is to eliminate the floor area limit and replace it with an open volume concept where on different levels of the building, you'd have areas within the building that are going to be exterior, balconies or porches or maybe an indentation of the building. And before I click the next slide to tell you what we think of that, the committee, when we first started this process, we truly believed that we were doing no harm. But as we went through the public review process, we started to get feedback from the community in saying that they weren't sure what it would do. It might make houses too big. It might make houses too small. Both were indeed correct. Is it consistent with the general plan? Yes. And the reason we believe it was consistent with the general plan is that it actually provides building modulation, which is a core goal of the general plan policy. And was it simple? Well, we thought it was simple. We went through the intent to make it simple. I think through the rulemaking process for the committee, it actually got more complex as we went through the process. So upon further reflection, I think we now believe it to be not simple. Third floor, third-story floor area limit and setback plane and step backs, these regulations really all relate to where a third level can be built. This is again within existing height limits. We're not changing the height limits or making them taller. As you know, we have third floors out there. Third-story floor area limit, 15% of the buildable area was the number that we felt was a good number. The committee recommended that number. Setback plane, where buildings would actually set back a little bit from the setback plane. So if you have a three-foot setback, at 24 feet above, it would have--it couldn't penetrate a 45-degree angle from the setback. And the step backs, these are a two-foot setback from the side for lots that are 30 feet or larger for that third floor. So the third floor would actually be set back a little bit from the setback line.
Jim, can I chime in here?
Please.
Also, the third-floor step backs are from the front and the rear, 15 feet from the front and rear, to try to push some of the building mass away from the streets or the alley or the front yards.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. The committee felt that it didn't do any harm to anyone, didn't take away any floor area. In essence, it reflects the existing development pattern that we have out there today. Is it consistent with the general plan? Yes. It does maintain consistency with the neighborhood scale. Is it simple? Well, again, when you put this in combination with the open volume, upon further reflection and further review and further public input, I think the answer became in our minds, it was not simpler. Basements with no floor area, now this becomes apparent because the Planning Commission considered a limit on the basements, and we'll get into that in a moment. But the code, coming from the committee, didn't provide any limits to basements. So when you take away the floor area limit and you have no limit on the size of the basements, there was a concern from some that you could build very large basements and create very large houses that might be considered out of character. At the same time, people were looking at basements as not being of concern because it's below grade. And so now you can start to see differing opinions based on differing standards. I should say, actually, the same standard. Is it consistent with the general plan? Again, this was the committee's recommendation to not have a limit on basements with no floor area limit, and it was consistent with the general plan, principally because it was all below grade. It doesn't affect the scale and mass of the buildings above grade, which is really what the general plan suggests that we control. It needs to be compatible in the density and scale. Was it simple? Well, it is a simpler standard. And I think the reason we believe it's simpler is because in a basement with no floor area, people would actually build a full-height basement. And just to kind of step back, what happens today is people build basements, but they don't want them to count towards floor area. So what happens is that they build the ceiling height just below the standard, above which it would actually be counted as floor area. So these ceilings are seven feet high. They're used for laundry, you know, other non-habitable areas, and they're not bedrooms or anything. But what happens is that people put in a false ceiling, and then they pull it out, and then they use it in a fashion that's inconsistent with the building code. So one of the reasons why we felt that this was simpler is because that whole game, if you will, wouldn't occur. Moving on, additional parking. The general plan has a policy that suggests that we consider adding additional parking requirements for larger homes based upon the bedroom sizes. Now, in the draft code, we're actually suggesting a third parking space for a single-family home when homes exceed 4,000 square feet. That's embodied in the recommendation. Houses of that size typically provide three-car garages. So we didn't feel that it did any harm. Doesn't necessarily do any harm if you have more parking, so it actually helps the parking requirements as well. It is consistent with general plan policies I mentioned, and it is a very simple standard. It's just an additional standard, but not a difficult one for us to administer. So that little box there is really a neutral symbol. With there, we're going to go step into what the Planning Commission did. They took the entire package out of the committee and then started with a public hearing process. And again, we started hearing from the community differing opinions on the same standard. Revised height and grade. No one had a concern about the revisions to height and grade. It really simplifies things. It doesn't change the height of buildings. And from a design standpoint, it's going to make everyone's life a lot easier. The residents will be pleased with this. Retained a floor area limit and open space. Again, due to the concern about the lack of a floor area limit, what do we do with that? The Planning Commission was looking at, well, if we just included or retained the existing limits, that will then ensure compatibility. You know, we would do no harm. You're not taking away anyone's floor area. In addition, it's consistent with the general plan. Why? Because it actually maintains the density and scale of the buildings. And is it simple? Well, I put a neutral box up there. The reason it's not any simpler than today's standards is no different than today's standards, which is really a neutral. It's a lost opportunity to try and simplify this system. But in our minds, we can actually continue the existing practice fairly readily without any problems in transition. We avoid unintended consequences. So indeed, that may actually be of benefit. Basement area limit. Now, the Planning Commission struggled with this one. They wanted to provide a limit to basements. There really wasn't a consensus here. There wasn't a consensus on limiting basements when there would be no floor area limit. But we put that back in there, and the limit would be 1.0. Again, you've got your buildable area, which is just your lot minus your setback area. And there would be a limit to that, 1.0. It can be in two levels. Now, when you do that, then you can actually have a full-height ceiling there. And so we avoid the game of having, you know, marginal ceiling heights and people using the space inconsistent with the building code. Does it do any harm to anyone? No. We don't believe it does any harm. People are building them anyway. It allows them just to have a slightly higher ceiling in the basement, more useful, better property values, if you will. Consistent with the general plan? Yes, it is. There is nothing in the general plan which would suggest that we limit basements in any remarkable way. It's below grade. Doesn't affect volume above grade. So it's consistent with that compatibility of design and scale that the general plan calls for. Is it simple? It's a very simple standard. Today, we put a check mark here, being it's simpler than today's standard because we're avoiding that basement game where we're again using basements for uses that they were never intended to be used. Moving on, as I mentioned, those third-floor setbacks and the floor area limits and the step backs, the Planning Commission agreed that those were good to have. It puts the building mass at the very top of the building, at the center of the building, so it kind of keeps it away from the public spaces and away from the neighbors. So the Planning Commission concurred with that recommendation.
Hey, Jim, I just want to chime in again on this one here. They recommended that we do not include the setback plane, which is the 45-degree angle that begins at 24 feet in height. And I think their feeling was is that the third-floor step backs, you know, mitigates any problems of building mass, you know, on the front of the building.
And as we wrap this up, we can go into any one of these different areas and kind of focus in on any particular topic. And we do have some graphics to show what these are. Now, the one thing that wasn't really addressed in the Planning Commission's recommendation is there is a secondary benefit to what the committee was looking at in terms of this open volume. They were going to be requiring 20% of your buildable area for properties in Coronado del Mar to not be within the buildings. And that has an effect of actually providing modulation in the building. You just have to have a porch or balcony or a courtyard on the side of the building. So you're going to get different buildings to move a little bit, and so they're less bulky. And the general plan calls for building modulation. And so the open air volume concept provided for that. But in this concept here, which is the existing floor area limit and open space concept, there's really no guarantee you're going to get building modulation. And none of the draft standards actually dealt with architectural treatment. The general plan says that all elevations of the building visible from public spaces have to be, have some architectural treatment. And we needed to provide for that. And so what we came up with is a very simple guideline that the Planning Commission endorsed, which was, in essence, to require that buildings have modulation and architectural treatment of all elevations that are visible from public places. We would administer that at the, at the front counter, if you will, or through any discretionary application. We didn't feel that that did any harm. And the reason we felt it didn't do any harm is that we've been using these guidelines, actually a little more complicated set of guidelines, for three years now effectively. And we're going to get into that in a moment because we're going to modify that with staff's recommendation with your input. Consistent with the general plan? Well, this guideline approach does provide articulation, modulation, and architectural treatment consistent with the general plan. Is it simpler? Well, it's really no different than what we're doing today. So it's neutral in our opinion. The last item is the Planning Commission's endorsement of the additional parking space when houses are over 4,000 square feet. So with that, what we're looking at is, we're seeking your guidance to go forward with some of these concepts so we can provide a draft code that is to your liking in this area. And due to the differences of opinion, we wanted to come to you with a study session to get some guidance. You know, we're asking that we adopt the revisions to height and grade based upon the committee's work and the Planning Commission's endorsement. Feel that that's consistent with general plan, does no harm, and simplifies standards. Retain the existing floor area limits. It doesn't do any harm. It doesn't take away floor area from anyone, which is an important consideration during the public outreach process. It's consistent with the general plan because it provides compatibility with existing neighborhoods because we're maintaining the same standard. Is it simple? No, it's neutral. Adopt the basement area limit. Doesn't do any harm. It actually might help in some cases if you've got an unusual owner who wants to build four levels down. Don't think that's going to happen anytime soon, but it will provide that protection. It's consistent with the general plan. There's no, there's nothing in the general plan which suggests that we limit basements, but I think it is consistent with, again, maintaining the density and scale of the development of the neighborhoods. And is it simple? Well, it is very simple. It's just, we're looking for a straight calculation on the floor area, and it's, we can actually plan check down on visual inspection. It's very easy. What we're also suggesting is rather than going to the current open space provision with the current floor area limit, what we're looking to do is use the committee's work, but in a slightly different way, a simpler way. We want to change the percentage to 15% rather than at 20%. And the reason to do that is we don't want to take away anybody's floor area. Because if it were a higher percentage, we might be taking away floor area and forcing people to build basements when they don't want to if they want to maximize their square footage, which is, you know, roughly 95% of the houses that we see today people are building to maximize. Now, it's consistent with the general plan, again, it helps maintain the compatibility with the neighborhood. And is it simple? We think it's simple as long as we keep it simple. And our suggestion is 15% of the buildable area has to be open on the first and second floor, whether it's a balcony, a porch, or a courtyard. It could be anywhere on the building. We want to provide design flexibility. We didn't want to specify where it would go, principally because there was discussions about having the front of the building have modulation. And people on the Peninsula who face the water, that's very valuable square footage. And we got feedback from the community that suggested, you know, let's not make that building wall move and have a balcony there or a porch there when I don't want one. They would rather have that living room or that master bedroom suite. And so hearing those concerns, we're suggesting that this open volume concept just be somewhere on the building. It will force modulation on the building. So we are consistent with the general plan. We're suggesting that we include the third-floor setback and the third-floor area limit, again, as created by the committee and endorsed by the Planning Commission. I think those are important, again, to regulate and keep that building mass to the middle of the building. We're actually suggesting a subtle change here. As I indicated, we've been working with these architectural design guidelines. We created this little booklet here. It's available online. It explains and has more information than what the current guideline that the Planning Commission endorsed. It explains what all these features are. It explains what architectural treatment is. It provides guidelines here. We've been using these for three years effectively. What we're suggesting to do is just to retain them, put them in the zoning code, and we just continue to use them. So again, doesn't do any harm. We've been using them for years. It's consistent with the general plan because it provides for the design criteria that we're looking for based on the general plan. And is it simple? Well, it's no different than what we're doing today.
Jim, were they intended as interim guidelines?
I believe that they were intended that way, but the actual adopting ordinance does not have a sunset clause. And the thought was to have the zoning code address it either through objective standards or through guidelines. And coming full circle on this, we're suggesting just to keep them, but put them in the code and administer them at the staff level or through discretionary review process. And the last thing on the list here is require that additional parking space for houses over 4,000 square feet. Again, that was what the committee suggested and what the Planning Commission is endorsing. So with that, what we're looking for the council's guidance on are these basic points right here. I'll leave the slide up, and we can move into other graphics or other issues, or we can show you the specific language of the design guidelines. We'd be happy to facilitate the discussion any way that you would like.
Mr. Selich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, before I comment on the staff presentation, I'd just like to just kind of go over the process that we went through over the last three years in working on this. As Jim said, we had 35 meetings. And I want to thank Councilmember Webb and Daigle for attending every one of those meetings and participating. I mean, there's a lot of work in reading and writing a zoning code. You have to be a masochist to read all this stuff, I think. Also, we had a technical advisory committee, and some of those members are in the audience here today. Todd Schooler, Mark Cross, Ian Harrison, Brian Jeanette, they're professionals that work with our code every day. And we thought it would be a good idea to bring them in and help test the different provisions that staff and the committee would come up with and recommend to make sure that there were good practical applications to the new provisions in the code. And again, these guys did a lot of lifting for us, doing studies and testing various regulations we came up with. So I want to-- So, I want to thank them for all the hard work that they put in on this, on this effort also. Writing a zoning code is a very difficult task, particularly when you're making as, as major a revision as, as we have here. And there always will be some unintended consequences. I'm sure that after whatever we adopt, it will come back and be doing some fine tuning on certain things that we didn't anticipate. But it's been a long, hard road getting to, getting to where we're at. From my standpoint, I know that the, the committee recommendations went out and were tested in the community and with the Planning Commission. And I think that the staff has come up with a pretty reasonable resolution of the differences of opinions here. Of all of the items that, that they came, that they've gone through here on the checklist, I think the one that was probably the most difficult to deal with was the, was the design guideline, design guideline concept. Do we have very detailed standards, or do we have guidelines that aren't, aren't detailed and overly regulatory? And I think I became convinced that, in discussing with the staff, that we've had these interim guidelines that have been in place for, how many years now? Four years? Something like that?
Close, close to four years now.
Close to four years. And we really haven't had any problem with them. And although they may not be, from my perspective, the ideal solution, they seem to be a very practical thing that's working in our city. And, I mean, I haven't heard any complaints from anybody on how the staff has been implementing these guidelines. And it helps us get over some hurdles in making this consistent with the general plan and some of the statements in the general plan. So, I think it's a very reasonable and practical solution that, I think it solves most of the problems that we've heard from the community during the outreach period on the residential portion of the code. I think it's something that our technical professionals think would be workable, and it's something that the staff also thinks is workable and would be reasonably easy to implement and not require a lot of retraining of our staff. So, I think it's a good approach, and I know that probably Dawn and Leslie and I know a lot more about a lot of the details of it than you guys do. So, you know, feel free to go out and ask the staff all the questions you want. And if I don't ask any questions, you'll know why.
Well, I do want to thank the staff and the committee and the Planning Commission. I mean, all of it, everybody that worked on it, because there was so much confusion about that open volume or whatever it was going to be called. And, I mean, after spending all the, all those years, I'm sure there was a lot of investment in it, and it must have been hard to pull back. But congratulations on, on doing it, because you saw that for the community, it just wasn't going to work as well, and I think that's great. Two questions. Does, the open volume, the 15%, does that include a carport? Can you say, oh, that's my open space, my open volume?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And then, on the basement, we have, say, a 1.5 FAL.
Yes.
So, 1,500 square feet total I can build above ground.
Okay.
That means I can build 1,000 feet below ground.
That's correct.
If I want to go two levels, as you suggested, then each one would be 500, or, but they still would only total 1,000. It wouldn't be like they could go 1,000 and 1,000.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hen?
With regard to the basement limits, the square footage in the basement, though, would be counted toward triggering an additional parking space. Is that correct?
Yes, it would. So, if you built the full basement, typically that house is going to be above 4,000 square feet. We're going to have that additional parking space. And I think everyone felt that that would be a benefit to the community, provide additional off-street parking.
I guess I'm still curious why we felt that it was necessary to put a limit on the basement, to have a basement floor area limit. It's outside the view of anyone from the street. It's unlikely that people would get extraordinarily carried away with that, you know, for the cost of doing something like that. Why, I don't, I, can you articulate better why it was felt necessary to have a floor area limit on the basement?
Could I just add something from the Corona Del Mar Residents Association and their discussions? One of the concerns was that with our small lots, that people would go down and create even more bedrooms and bigger houses without adequate parking, and so that our parking problems would be exacerbated. So, that was their concern.
Although we're, we're requiring the addition of a parking space above 4,000 square feet, so it seemed to me that that's been addressed at, at least to certain, to some extent. And so, with that, why do we care?
Well, that's one perspective. I think there were some in the community who felt that we still needed a limit, again, to combat having a much larger house, even with three spaces, because, you know, if you went and built something even larger than one, 1.0 buildable area, you could create a much larger house. Now, we don't expect that to be really feasible, given the property values today, and people aren't really desiring to live in a cave. So, I think you could look at it from that perspective, and maybe, why do we care? Maybe you don't need it. So, I mean, that might be one that you might not need to do. Again, there are people in the community who feel it's important. Now, we don't, we did discuss this with the technical advisory group, and we didn't feel it would hurt any designs. Typically, basements aren't coming in that size. It's a rare occurrence where we have a basement approaching this limit. We could even go smaller and probably not do any damage.
Mr. Mayor, I just got one other thing. I really forgot to credit our planning commissioners, too, that were on the committee, because Dawn and Leslie and I were really more of the policy types on the committee, but Barry Eaton, every meeting, just had a ton of very detailed comments and things to take into consideration. Bob Hawkins, same thing, had a lot of good editorial comments and things of that nature to make it clearer and read better. You know, Mike Torres, same thing, put a lot of input from those guys. And of course, the staff. The staff worked really hard on it, and a couple of times, they thought we were going to really burn them out, but they held in there. It's, it's a long time to spend three years working on something like this. A lot's been invested in it.
It was a massive effort. What was the committee's consensus on the basement? I know we had a, we had some views on that.
Our consensus was no, you know, there's no limit on the, on the basement that came out of the committee recommendation.
Mr. Hen?
So, shifting subjects for just a moment, you know, in the First District on the Peninsula, you know, there's a very high level of incentive and pressure to maximize, you know, the buildable area on the homes. And I just want to make sure, can you make an unequivocal statement that this set of requirements would not result in a, in a reduction in the ability to build square footage on lots on the peninsula?
I can say without a doubt that it will not reduce the square footage that you can build on the peninsula, without a doubt.
Yeah, the key there is, is the 15% open space. That was the key thing that brought that about.
And, and the reason I can say that is, we would be retaining the existing limit. Now, in, in order to achieve this open volume of 15%, what you would need to do is build that third floor, and the third floor limit is 15%. And if you built a basement, you can even achieve more square footage that you can build today. So, with these standards, it does affect design. It will actually provide more building modulation on the first and second level. But if you want to go right to the limit at 2.0, and if you didn't want to build that third floor, then you're building a basement. Now, maybe on the peninsula, people might not want to build basements. Some do, but it's a little different. But you're going to be building that third floor, and what we're seeing with, you know, 95% of the homes is that they're already building it anyway. So, can you build the same square footage? Yes. And if you want to build a basement, you can build more.
You have questions, Mr. Campbell? Did you have more of the presentation to go through?
Actually, we're finished. What, I guess what we're looking for is, is, you know, at least the consensus on these issues to move forward with those, and we're going to incorporate those into the draft that we would be bringing back at a public hearing on the 28th. And again, we've got the entire rest of the zoning code to look at, and we'll provide a summary of that, as well as some of the other conditions, changes that the Planning Commission is making.
All right. Well, maybe it'd be appropriate at this time then to take public comments before we sort of kick that issue around and give some direction back to staff. Thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Let me invite the public who would like to speak on this matter to come to the podium, please. Please state your name.
I'm not sure if I'd be considered the public in this. My name's Todd Schooler. I'm one of the architects that was on the technical committee. And Ed, don't you wish that three years ago, when we thought this was only going to take a year, we would have had one of these little forms? We could have just checked all these boxes?
Wouldn't that have been wonderful?
Yeah. I think the architects that were involved in this generated some of these ideas and concepts, and the compromises that were made in regards to, like, the basement area and stuff, we all are pretty much on board with. After being party to all the meetings and all the public hearings and such, and going to the Planning Commission meetings, we think that these are really good compromises. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have of us, and, and that's the end of my comments, really.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you. With my colleague's indulgence, I've indicated to Karen that she can have a few extra moments, because she's going to present, I think, some results from a survey today, so.
Yeah, we are, Mayor. We're definitely going to do that. Good afternoon, Mayor Curry, councilmembers and staff. My name is Karen Tringali, and I'm here this afternoon representing the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. And we want to share with you the results of our most recent survey that we did, particularly with regard to the proposed zoning code changes. Just as a little bit of background, for over 25 years, or almost 25 years now, the Residents' Association has been providing a unified voice on any issue that affects Corona Del Mar residents. Our community is composed of approximately 6,350 households. We use a variety of outreach programs to keep our membership informed of any issues that we feel might have a direct impact on the quality of life in Corona Del Mar. With our city's leadership, working with our city's leadership and staff, we're really committed to protect, preserve, and improve the quality of life for all those that call Corona Del Mar their home. In the midst of all the public outreach meetings that were going on this summer as a result of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department staff, we got a phone call from Robin Naismith, who's Vice President of Options, Marketing, Research, and Consulting. And she volunteered her company's services to help us conduct a more formal survey than we've been able to in the past. And we certainly were glad to take advantage of the services that she offered. So, Robin's going to come up here and spend about five minutes or so, going through the survey process and the results of those surveys. And then, if there's any time left, we could address any specific questions you have or address perhaps the specific issues that Corona Del Mar had with the floor area limits and basements. And with that, Robin?
Okay. Well, I'd like to, first of all, thank you all for your time and your attention for the next few minutes. This was a short survey that was conducted among residents in the Corona Del Mar area. And so, with that said, I'll give you a few details as we go on. The survey was put online. There was an invitation that was mailed out from the Corona Del Mar Residents Association to all of its members, and the members were also asked if they would like to generate support from other people who maybe were not members of the association, that they could certainly make the survey available for, for their neighbors or other people. The survey was online between August 30th and September 8th, and there was also a paper copy that could be downloaded from the website. We had a total of 365 residents respond. Actually, there were a few more, but some people didn't hit the complete button or didn't get all the way through the survey, so we could not include them in the final, in the final results. With that number, 365 people, though, based on the population of Corona Del Mar, the statistical error of these results is actually quite small, plus or minus 5%. So, at the bottom, you see that the total number of people who responded was 365. 76% of the survey participants actually resided in the flower streets. So, we had greater participation from them than those who lived in the planned community area. It's about 24%. When we go through these results real quickly, the results are for the total sample, both the people in the flower streets and the people who lived in the planned communities. There is one instance where the results are different for those two groups, and I'll just highlight that in a moment. One of the very first questions we asked was how well residents felt the term seaside garden village described Corona Del Mar. And on the left side, we see that about 38% gave a positive indication that they felt that this was a good description of Corona Del Mar. About 24% said, no, they, they didn't feel that this was a particularly good description. And then, we had about another 40% in the middle who were relatively uncommitted. Takeaway from that is that the term seaside garden village possibly has, is, is not the best description from the, from the, from the resident's point of view. And it may be because this term seaside garden village, with all three of those terms in there, you could agree with one of them, but not with another term, and then that would have caused some sort of lack of support. Next in the questionnaire, we asked a few questions about zoning code philosophies. In other words, as a resident, how do you feel the zoning code should be built to match your needs? One of the questions was zoning codes should make, which do you agree with more? The individuals' rights more important, or the neighborhood aesthetics more, should maintain neighborhood aesthetics as being more important than the individuals' right or desire to build whatever they wanted to do? And you can see that the support was strongest for maintaining the neighborhood atmosphere at 63%. Moving on, we asked another question about whether or not homes should be allowed to be any size at all, or if there should be some proportionate indication, which obviously there is now, and overwhelming strong support for managing home sizes that are proportionate rather than just letting people do whatever they wanted to do. A third question, we phrased zoning codes that are, that increase allowable home sizes would have the following impact on village atmosphere. And the overall finding there was that 76% believed if larger homes can be built, that it would negatively impact the village atmosphere of Corona Del Mar. Just a quick note, though seaside garden village may not be the best description of Corona Del Mar, clearly the village atmosphere is important. We asked respondents to tell us what they knew about the current zoning code, and we actually gave them a checklist of items to mark whether or not they believed each of these things was true or false. What we found overall is that most Corona Del Mar residents do not believe that there are garage requirements beyond a one-car garage. That's the only thing they really believe that needs to be there. And they know that home size is related to the lot size, but they're not clear on the The following question was, are you aware of a proposed zoning code change? And what we saw was pretty much a split down the middle. Half were aware. Half of the Corona Del Mar residents were aware of a zoning code change in the works, and half were not. Among those who were aware, we, again, gave them the checklist and said, okay, which of these items do you believe is going to be in the proposed zoning code? And what we found out here is that fortunately, if they say they know that there's a proposed change, they're also up somewhat on what those changes may be. Clearly, we didn't put the entire checklist of possible changes in here. But what we did find out is they understand that the changes relate to carports and garages, specifically with respect to that 4,000-square-foot home size, and that it also relates to basement allowances. This group of people, this slightly smaller group of people who was aware of, of the proposed changes, again, knew that lot sizes and, and that home size would be based on lot size, but still didn't know what the ratio was. After we gave them a description of the current zoning code and the proposed zoning code, we asked how, what their level of support was for the proposed zoning code. And here, we saw basically three different groups. We had about a third who indicated that they had strong or positive support based on what we had given them or the description that they had read. We had about a third who had weak or no support. And then, we had about another, well, it was 27%, but a large third group who were relatively uncommitted.
Can I ask you? Can I ask one more question?
Mm-hmm.
About your numbers, okay, so when you get to this point, you had 365 people taking the poll, and about half are aware of it, so now you're down to about 180 people.
Not here anymore. This is all 365 people, because we gave them the information in order to make, to provide their opinion about the support.
Okay.
So, by, by this point, we're back to everybody else. Good question. So, oh, and I mentioned I was going to pull out one clarifying point when there was a difference between the flower streets and the planned community people, residents. Those who lived in the flower streets actually were less likely to be strong supporters than those who did not. So, their strong support, the flower street people, was 33% versus 48% strong support for planned community residents. A last question, the very last question, the last slide we have here. We asked to, we asked residents to indicate their level of agreement with several statements. And I'll just go through those statements and point out what, what the meaning behind the, the agreement is. The first statement was that proposed zoning codes would allow for bigger homes that would detract from the village atmosphere in Corona Del Mar. In other words, In other words, do you agree or disagree with this statement? We saw that there was stronger agreement than disagreement. I have to say that that 48 versus 39% is not a great difference in terms of those who agree or disagree with that. So there is some level of uncertainty or ambiguity from the, from the belief whether, from residents understanding whether or not it will detract from the village atmosphere. The proposed zoning code would increase the flow of traffic, they believe that it would. The proposed zoning code would increase building of oversized homes, after getting the description, they believe that it would. And the proposed zoning code would negatively impact population density. Again, agreement was a little bit stronger there. Residents are more likely to indicate that they believe the proposed zoning code would not support the village atmosphere. But it's also relatively clear, one of the main points to walk away from this is that there's a fair amount of confusion and ambiguity, particularly when we ask them, what do they know about the zoning code now, and what do they know about the proposition? So with that confusion, I think there's a lot of, a lot of that is coming out here. They're just not sure what's going to happen. There's no mandate from this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, additional speakers, please come forward. State your name, please.
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I was going to try and analyze the change number four, but I couldn't get the, the reports down to look at anything but titles. So I would like to point out, it's pretty hard to make the analysis of what the code was. There was some confusion even on the Planning Commission Board as to what the code was going forward. In the 34, they had 34 changes. It ended up 40-some changes, so that there's quite a bit of difference there. Number two, we have been in the Corona Del Mar Community Association. This is the homeowners' group. We had a homeowners' group that was canceled out by the Residents Association. As we didn't meet but a couple times a year, they didn't meet but a couple times a year either. But there is no direct Residents Association group now in Corona Del Mar. All these changes apply predominantly to old Corona Del Mar at the, because of the 1.5 zoning penalty that's put on it. So we are not getting the same zoning as everybody else. For the size lots we have, which are larger than Balboa Island or the peninsula, we are having a much more restrictive zoning. We have 1.5 buildable, they're talking about 2.0. I'd like to point that out. I would also like to say that now I, no one could tell me whether the 200-square-foot garage allowance that's put on Balboa Island is applicable to Corona Del Mar. It apparently is not. So anything that is covered is going to be counted against zoning. So that would count against your 1.5. You had another comment in the zoning code that said if the house with, the lot was bigger than 30 feet, that you would change the allowable zoning, I mean, the, the amount that had to be open space to 15%. It would increase that by about a third. You could not get back to the same zoning until you had a 42-foot lot. So there are, there are people that are penalized that have lots somewhere between 30 and 42 feet. They don't get any zoning or any, any incentive to increase the size of the house, even though they have a bigger lot, because it's just not in the code. It's, there's a penalty in the code. I found this in several areas. Okay, then, I'd like to point out from a standpoint of cottages, that we have homes like the Amundson House in our, in our area. We enjoy the house, but I would like to ask how we call that a cottage? I mean, it's on three lots, it takes up the entire, it's a beautiful home. I'm not complaining about it a bit. I think he has the right to build it. On the other hand, that's not a cottage. That is not, and, and other people have large homes there too. This is not a cottage, cottage neighborhood, any more than Balboa Island is a cottage neighborhood. They don't look like cottages. The last thing I'd like to, to point out is that you do not end up with any more buildable, you end up with slightly less with the present zoning. I would ask that, why was Balboa Island excluded? I mean, Balboa Island has no zoning changes in it like this. And in fact, apparently, if the people object, they wouldn't be put through all this. Well, I think the people do object. This was a, a, a survey of the whole community, which included all the communities around old Corona Del Mar that have CNRs, and they are not subject to any changes. So I'd like to ask you the question, if I have a house above Corona Del Mar, look across Corona Del Mar, would I be, prefer to have those homes shorter and smaller so that I can have a better view or not? And most of the people that are objecting are in that areas.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
I, I'd just like to clarify something, that the Corona Del Mar Residents Association meets monthly, as you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Salich and I, we get up at 7:30 in the morning to attend it. So they're very regular meetings.
The meetings are board meetings. They're not general open to everybody. You could go, but they're not advertised, and they're not.
I think if you go on the website, you'll see that they are advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Alan Beek. I'd like to introduce some historical perspective and discussion. This is really not a new thing. It's been going on for 30 years when mansionization first began to creep into Corona Del Mar, and the residents got very upset about it. They came down here to the Planning Commission, which I was on at that time, and they asked for action. Some of the planning commissioners didn't want to work with them. They said, go away, take a survey. So they did take a survey, and I worked with them. In those days, you couldn't take a survey by email. It was done with a hard copy, sent by the postal service. The survey went to every registered voter and to every property owner of record in Corona Del Mar, which of course resulted in some people getting two ballots, and some of them refused to send in both. They said that'd be like voting twice. We did our best to convince them they should send in all their ballots. It was not a general survey, it was specific. There were a series of public meetings, the community association was quite active at that time. There were several public meetings to hammer out the details of what we wanted to ask for. And what resulted were four specific things. Lower the height limit by several feet. Limit the floor area to 1.5. And even further than 1.5, to the base area between the setback lines was, for purposes of floor area calculation, reduced by 40% of the amount that exceeded 1,600 square feet. So it was really a restriction considerably further than 1.5. The second floors were set back by one-third of the length of the lot. Those proposals went out to all the voters and all the property owners, and they were approved by the voters two to one. They were approved by the property owners four to three, which was a pretty clear expression of a public, of public opinion. The architects and the realtors combined and packed the council chambers down here, and the council would not touch it. They wouldn't do anything to respond to the people's very clearly expressed desire. Now, that's lain dormant for quite a few years, but then we had a visioning process and a general plan update, and we did a lot of work to get the vision of the people. And the people spoke very clearly that this was their major concern, that mansionization and the destruction of their neighborhoods was the top item. And what we have seen coming out here is no reduction in height, no reduction in floor area, and no further setback of the second floors. In other words, the people have been totally disregarded. And you've had a lot of meetings and done a lot of work, but it's all been, with that left-hand column over there, that top said, do no harm. And what it meant was, do no good. There are buildings out there that are terrible. They are what make the people mad. They're what this is all about. And you say, well, we aren't going to make those non-conforming. Well, if you don't make those non-conforming, then you can't do any good. Now, I have brought these concerns up to the, to the study group and to the Planning Commission, and they've continued to be ignored. I've shown how you could simplify, adopt regulations that conform with what the people say they want. I've made suggestions that mediate those requirements the Corona Del Mar people said they wanted a few years ago, but it's all been ignored. I'm willing to work with anybody anytime on it. I'm just overflowing with statistics and graphs and diagrams, and be happy to be a part of a constructive process, but there seems to be no interest in being constructive. We are determined to do no good. I'm not addressing the questions of basements. I'm not addressing the extra parking space. Those are separate questions. And of course, I'd have a lot to say about them if they came up, but that's not on my agenda at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beek. Are there any other speakers? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council and staff. Pull the mic down.
State your name, please.
Hi, Mike. I'm a 34-year resident of Corona Del Mar, and before that, owned out on the peninsula, so I've been around some time. Both my house and I are Antiques.
State your name, please, Pam.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Ma'am, state your, state your name, please.
Janine, oh, I'm sorry, Janine Puckett.
Thank you.
Janine Puckett.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to express myself, and my comments include the opinions of neighbors generally. I've been walking the streets and talking to people. Couples, two couples, one who lived on Orchid for 14 years and another on Heelyotrope for 19 years, are samples of many who are disillusioned by the decline of the village character of old Corona Del Mar. I and others deplore the magnitude of the massive homes on the conjoined lots in the flower streets, and we want the city to curtail allowing huge lots to join and build outsized homes. There's much consternation over the Amundson House, and while one gentleman may enjoy it, I think that everyone that I talk to enjoys joking about it. Its design is grotesque, it's out of tune, out of tone with the charming seaside village, and it's been described variously as Hansel and Gretel, the Dracula House, a Disney design, it looks like a movie set, is inappropriate to our village. I favor personal property rights. I think they should be honored, however, within some sensible standard of appropriateness for the community, and I don't think the Dracula House meets that criteria. Homes of that ilk and size, owners wanting such ostentation should be directed to build in neighborhoods with acreage and larger lots, such as Pelican Hill, where they can have private compounds surrounded by vegetation and nobody has to look at their Dracula House. I don't really understand a conclusion that biggest is best. To many of us in Corona Del Mar and the flower streets, big enough is just fine. It's appropriate to our community and its limitations, key of which are the small lots and the narrow clogged streets. We suffer year-round. Never mind the onslaught from beachgoers during the warm months and, and essentially year-round, whenever we have those winter heatwaves. Labor Day weekend is like Christmas to us when we say, oh, now we may get some parking back. Speaking of parking, an elderly long-term owner volunteered to me yesterday that units having one carport and one enclosed garage do actually have a car parked off the street in the carport, where units with two enclosed garages have Christmas decorations and junk and stuff inside, not cars. My position on garages agrees with hers. Keep the single carport and the one enclosed garage per unit, please. I have much, much to deliberate over the full basements below grade not being counted in the allowable square footage. I do feel that it is an invitation to more bootleg units, also to more autos, boats, golf carts, which will also further clog our crowded streets. And homes of the humongous sizes that are being proposed, and the lifestyles of the people who occupy them, require more and more service vehicles to the huge homes, once again, using our streets and creating noise, grease, congestion. I do realize that partial basements may be indicated on hillside lots and lots of that type, and I think that more study needs to be done on this matter. I conclude in saying that I found that the public is just generally not informed about either present or proposed zoning code changes. They are not knowledgeable, and thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers? Okay, saying none, I'm going to close the public comment. You've spoken, sir.
Can I call one more time?
No. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? If not, I'm going to close the public comment period on this side, and then take it back to the council. Staff has asked for some direction on these matters. Councilman McGregor.
Just before I get into the other thing, during the general plan process, it was amazing to me, being part of the General Plan Advisory Committee, how much agreement there was on almost everything we did. I mean, we would have 90% agreement, and when we did our various forums and outreach, it seemed like I would go into breakout session after breakout session, and it would be, oh, yeah, we agree, except for one issue. And that was this one that we've heard about tonight. It was the thing about the size of the house, keeping the size reasonable, small for the lot size versus being able to build. And that was 50/50, and it was bitter. There were the people that decried, there were the loss of sunlight, the huge looming houses on small lots. And then the others who said, I paid very good money for this lot, and I am going to build exactly what I want. That's why I came to Corona Del Mar, so I can build what I want. So there, it hasn't been as much unanimity on this issue as might be supposed. It really is, I got emails on both sides of this even today. So it's, it's a sensitive issue on, on both sides, and I'm sympathetic, but it's a difficult one. Saying that, I think that the staff and the Planning Commission has gotten basically right, and I would, my feeling at least is to, my, I would be approving what they have suggested.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Hen.
I guess my view is I don't see why we have the floor area limitation on basements. My, my view would be that that's just an unnecessary restriction.
Mr. Campbell, let me ask you a question that Mr. Hen had asked relative to the peninsula. Let me ask it about Corona Del Mar. Under this plan, is anyone, if you will, losing any of their vested rights to build what they, from what they currently have, or any size, are they, are they being subjected to size limitations over what they could currently build under the current zoning requirements?
You'll actually be able to build more square footage.
Okay, so no one's property rights are being, if you will, impinged through this?
No.
Okay.
They will affect design in subtle ways here and there, modulation, but it won't affect the.
But they will, they will have to modulate, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Webb.
Just a clarification on the.
Just a clarification on the 15 percent. I don't disagree with that, but I thought you indicated on there that there would be no modulation at the front or the front yard. But don't the design guidelines that you'd be developing as, as you have today have some modulation in the front? Is there an inconsistency there?
Let me take a look at those design guidelines real quick.
Jim, I'll chime in. I think the design, the design guidelines basically say that all building elevations that are visible from public spaces, so public streets, public beach, boardwalk, have to have some architectural treatment and modulation. What we're suggesting is we would implement that through the design guidelines, taking into account certain designs. What we didn't want to do is mandate a certain percentage or a certain number of square or amount of square footage or modulation that has to be on the front, given the different neighborhoods and some of the uniqueness of some of the neighborhoods. And so I think we would use the design guidelines as a safeguard to ensure that we see modulation or, and/or architectural treatment on, on the fronts of buildings.
Yeah, I, I thought in your, in the description that was given that it indicated that that modulation, based on the 15 percent, could be any place on the building, like for instance, if you wanted to take and build a C-shaped building with the open space facing the side yard setback, with no modulation on the front, one side and the back, would that, could you do that with, and, without implementing the, the design guidelines? As soon as the guy, the design guidelines, if they're there, provides for modulation, then I'm, I feel that that's appropriate. I guess my question was, does a C-type building, is it impacted by the design guidelines to where the design guidelines would overrule the, the flat-faced building facing a street?
Well, I can add a little bit to that discussion. The design guidelines don't specify specifically where these step backs or massing offsets, if you will, are to be located. So you could have a C-shaped building, and it would meet the zoning provisions, but that C-shaped building would have to come with it other facets that would lead the staff to find it consistent with the design guidelines. But the design guidelines don't specify that it must be on the front of the building. It talks about long, unarticulated walls are discouraged on structures, massing offsets, varied textures, openings, recesses. Design accents on building walls should be used to enhance the architecture. Front façade shall include windows. But there isn't a mandate where the front has to actually shift. And again, there are some folks on the peninsula who have their front yards facing the water, and they would prefer, in some cases, to have and possibly not have a balcony or a porch that would provide that offset. So I mean, I think there's different ways that you can provide it. It might be on the back of the building, it faces the alleys, which really are pedestrian corridors, if you will. And that side actually is visible in a lot of respects, depending upon where it's located. So I, no, it won't, the design guidelines won't force it to be on the front. So if it is on the side, you know, these guidelines do provide some protection. They're going to have to provide other amenities that, that make it consistent with the guidelines.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I think there's a lot of concurrence around what the staff proposed, so that's, that's encouraging. As far as those basements go, I think it's, you know, rational that, you know, that's not something that we see. There's not an aesthetic impact, and, you know, it does allow people square footage. I've never really bought into the assumption that more square footage equals more people. The largest homes I've been into this community have always been occupied by two people or so. But I don't know. Councilman Sallust, do you have a view on that basement?
Well, again, as I stated earlier, the committee's recommendation before we went to the planning commission was to not have any limits on the, on the basement. That being said, I, I agree with Councilman Hannity. I don't see a logical reason to place a limit on it because how many levels of basement are you going to build? At some point, you know, it's, it becomes impractical, so.
No, I support the limits.
I can, you know, I can go either way on it, to be perfectly frank about it.
For my two cents, I, 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 first of all, along with Councilmember Gardner, I want to thank the committee for doing, I think, a very solemnatic job here in, in working this out and in, in developing these appropriate compromises. I also am sort of agnostic as it relates to basements, but I don't want us to have as a policy that requires people to build basements with lower ceilings, you know, seven-foot or six-foot ceilings, simply because they find a loophole in the law. I think we need to address that, and I'm indifferent, frankly, how we do that. Are there any other comments? Okay. Yes.
At one point, as far as something out of it, the, we got a letter from the Irvine Company about the buffering and screening, and this is totally off the residential thing, but screening the mechanical equipment. Was that an inadvertent deletion, or is it something, there was a rationale behind it? Did you see that?
We did see the letter. We'll take a look at that. I think we'll be discussing those provisions at one of the upcoming public hearings, and we can probably bring it up then, and we'll take a look at it carefully.
Well, it sounds like those basements are kind of a toss-up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, does staff feel like it has adequate guidance on the basement?
I don't have a sense of what you'd like us to bring back yet, unless a couple more people wanted to weigh in.
I personally don't, don't care. I think that, that I.
So I would count two no's and three don't cares and one yes. Is that about right?
I think there's two yeses, two kind of in-between.
I was sorry, you're reversing the question, but you're right. Okay. So we will probably bring it, bring it back without a basement limitation.
Okay, well, just to help you along, I'll, I'll support no limit on the basement.
I will, too.
There we go. It's consensus. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Campbell? The next item is public comments on items not on the study session agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on matters not on the agenda, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn until 7 o'clock. Thank you.